That works better than local recording. So we now are in a recorded session and I expect it will remain so until the end of the meeting. So that said, I'll turn it over to council.
Thank you.
Well.
Okay, okay. Sorry, Simon, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to clarify something before I'll let Kelly say. I had a lot of people contact me thinking that we were actually voting on the mandate again today. And I just wanted to be clear that while this is a work session to talk about mitigation techniques and I'm sure masks are going to be talked about a lot. We're not actually voting on the mandate again today. So just wanted to make sure that for attendees that are listening, somehow the word got out there that we were gonna vote again. And I had countless people call me asking me to vote, you know, vote this, vote that. I said, we're not voting, it's just a work session. So just a FYI, work session, no voting, no motions.
I think that's a great point to bring up, Simon.
Okay, I'll start. And I apologize, I don't have my husband here to keep my kids quiet, but I'll try to keep them quiet on my phone.
It goes on, no worries.
Okay, okay. So for me, obviously, I don't think it's a secret. My goal would be to have a mask mandate in Cedar Falls. I don't wish to upset anybody's businesses or take away anybody's freedoms. But at the same time, I feel like we need to recognize that just because someone feels one way on the issue, we need to also recognize there's another side to that discussion. And so we are here, I feel like, especially the at-large people, to represent all citizens of our city. And I want all citizens to know that we are not just taking this lightly and that we will continue to have a discussion in hopes of keeping all citizens safe. So I've noticed a lot in discussions to me and then just, you know, emails that have been sent to the council. Some people have a whole set of different facts than what medical professionals would believe to be true. So I feel like, at the very least, our council needs to talk about if we can't come to a consensus. And again, mask mandate is my goal, but we need to at least educate people. I also feel like, and this isn't just for COVID-19, there is a distrust among some people and the science field, the medical field. When Dr. Nafisa was on the other day, I mean, what a great resource. But unfortunately, there are, obviously, there's a political part of it and that some folks can't see beyond that. So I would like to talk about how we could at least, at the very least, educate people. And some of the things I have thought about, you know, sometimes people trust the people they know. We have family practice or primary care providers in our city who have been part of people's lives for their whole lives, or, you know, they delivered their babies or had made those personal connections that I feel like we don't tap into. And maybe that could somehow convey information or how to obtain information from resources that are reliable. The other thing, so things that I've heard is people always have a comment on how effective masks are. They, you know, to me, the resources are CDC, WHO, Mayo Clinic, University of Iowa, Johns Hopkins, those would be acceptable resources to get that information from. So also, I wanted to point out, I went to, just to try this out, and I already had a date planned, but we went to a family dinner at a local restaurant in our sister city. And we, of course, followed the mask mandate. I had not been in a restaurant to eat. I've done plenty of pickups, but not to eat since before the pandemic. And it was great. It was easy. Granted, this is a place that serves food, so I do understand there's places that don't serve food that are struggling because they have a whole different set of circumstances. But we went in, we wore our masks to our table, we were allowed to sit in, our party was a party of 11, we sat all together. We were able to take our masks off, sitting at the table and drinking. And then when we got up to use, you know, if you had to go to the restroom, you put your mask on. If you left, you put your mask on. So I feel like some people aren't clear what this means. They think that they have to wear the mask all the time, even when they're outside. And that's not the way I understand it, or that's the way it's typed. The way it's typed is the proposal that we had before was it's if you can't socially distance outside. So I feel like basically, my concern here is education. The other thing that I think of as an essential employee, and I think how lucky I am to work in a place where my employer has required masks from the beginning, and how that makes me feel safe as a essential worker, and how it makes me feel safe to go home to my family. We need to also remember that some of these folks who work in places where their employer hasn't chose to make that a mandate. So even if that person wears the mask, they are not getting the reciprocation back. So it's, it is, there's another confusion. Some people think that because you wear the mask, that's protecting you. It's not that case that both people need to wear the mask to have the most protection. So again, that's it. I wanted to start out with that.
Okay. And
For myself? Or go ahead. I was just gonna say for myself, you know, prior to that vote, I pretty well tuned out to the controversy, the misinformation, the seems like you can find a fact somewhere and there's a contradiction to it somewhere else online or wherever. So I wear the mask, but all prior to that vote last week, it's, I pretty well clocked out to what's been happening with this stuff because I'm tired of the controversy. I'm tired of not being able to get factual information. But since, obviously, my phone's been, or email's been blowing up too. And I think the conversation is warranted to try and get to some at least like some baseline facts that we agree on or that we think are important as the council for our community. You know, looking across the country, there's, and, you know, as soon as you open this up, then the politics start playing into it. But 34 states have statewide mask mandate. There's numerous cities that have come online in Iowa and it's, I hope to get to some baseline understanding, at least amongst us, as to whether masks work or what, you know, where the mayor, I appreciate the numbers or your tracking of this, just so there's a consistent metric out there for people to look at and understand. I don't know exactly where those numbers are today, but I felt like this conversation warranted some more conversation. So.
I would say, um, to Councilman Miller's point, I agree. It, I think as a council, we could maybe come to a consensus of where we're gonna get our facts from, because there's, there's so many places out there. And I agree with Kelly on this. We gotta just look at CDC, WHO, Johns Hopkins, Mayo. Otherwise, like, like Councilmember Miller said, you're gonna, you can find, you know, a refute and a contradiction everywhere on the internet. So so for me, I think maybe as a council, us establishing where we're gonna take our information from would be very important. And also would be somewhere we could point the people to and say, hey, we're getting our information from the CDC and the WHO, we're following that. And as that changes, we will update things. So I don't know if the council's up to it's kind of informally outlining where we want to get our information, but I would be in support of maybe us unifying where, what information we're actually gonna use as factual.
Yeah, that's, that's really helpful. And to Mark's and Simon's point of where we get our information from and, and that we're, we at least have some baseline agreement or understanding. Yes, we're Dr. Nafisa at the county public health directorate, she is the county expert on this. And as a, as a council, I think that at least we should be able to say, or you should be able to say that you agree that she is the area's expert for this, for our numbers, for recommendations. Because if we're not, if we're not willing to listen to that guidance, then what are we paying for? Why have a county public expert? Not to say that we would go lockstep, anything that she says goes, but we should take seriously into account her judgment and her recommendations, my view.
I completely agree with that.
Since you asked about the numbers, kind of where we're at, it might be a good time to go ahead and just show what that looks like, since I showed it a couple of days ago. Let's see, here it is. So back when we talked before, it was like last Wednesday, I was showing numbers kind of spiking or coming upward. And I thought, oh, man, this, you know, if we're talking about school coming back into session, we're probably looking at the second wave. So my prediction, you know, with the information I had, seeing this trend, I'm thinking, man, we're probably gonna see a significant increase continue with school in session. But what we've actually seen is the, like, the average count drop down. And as we look at, let me make this a little bit bigger for you. As we look at these, these figures, the, the red lines are what you see, that's the county daily counts. So those are the numbers you're used to. And all this COVID or the HDHI scale that I use, all it's doing is taking those numbers and kind of crunching a little bit to take the last seven days worth of data. So we see here, it might have been an outbreak and there might have been some additional numbers in here that were causing us to increase. But then over the last couple of days, it's dropped way down to like 7.6 cases per 100,000. And that's based on the actual numbers. What did we have the last couple of days? It was 3526 and then up to 3543 today. So we're in the 13s, 12, 10, 17s on a daily level. And that's way down from what we were doing last week of 42, 46, 44. So these are decreasing. I'm not a medical person, so I can't tell you why that's happening, but at least it tells me we're, it doesn't look like we're in the second wave yet. So that's, that's good news. I just wanted to share that with you.
It's a tough one, you know. I mean, like Kelly was saying, there's politics all laden all over this. And that's unfortunate, but you know, I'm wondering what the, where do we want to see this in our community? I realize the governor hasn't put anything in place. But what's the intent here? I mean, do we continue to live with this through the next year? Or do we try to take some effort to do something in our community? I don't know what the right answer is to that, you know, I'm to the mayor's point, I'm nervous with kids coming back to school. I see, I saw some other things that you and I was talking about here today. My daughter, I took her back down to Ames. Sure enough, she was in bed yesterday with a flu and 101.10. So is that COVID? I don't know, but it certainly makes me wonder. And she's been down at Ames for two weeks. So are we gonna see something similar here? And do we want to take action? Do we not? I'm glad we're having the conversation.
And I, my understanding from, from talking with some of the council members is that we, we may not get a unanimous consensus on whether masks work and, you know, things like that. But I, I think it'd be at least worth having that consensus. If we have four or five council members agree, that's enough to help us move the needle or move the direction forward in one way or another for whatever we decide. If we want to have more education, well, we need council consensus to say, what's the education about? Is it that masking is, is helpful? That the information provided by X website is the most relevant or the most believable. You know, Blackout COVID-19, are we gonna promote that and say, hey, this information is helpful? I think the council, it would be really helpful for the public to see that where the council stands, as Mark said, on certain, on aspects of this. So perhaps that's the most helpful thing that we could accomplish today is having some of those agreements in place. And then even to, to set that, that itself into a resolution. Just a, just a thought. Go ahead, Kelly. And you got you muted right now. So I can unmute for you, I think. Go ahead.
Okay. So I think one of the things we need to remember, and I know this because I talk all day long on the phone to people who are concerned about having symptoms of COVID. So the incubation period of the COVID virus is between two and 14 days. Sometimes they'll say 10, but that, so I want people to understand that that's where we get the spread when we don't know we have it. But it's even if you tested, that's why today the CDC is now saying that it's not necessary to test asymptomatic patients. It's because, to my understanding from the physicians that I work with, that asymptomatic test doesn't tell us anything because just because you test negative today doesn't mean that you couldn't in a day or so later test positive. So again, that's why when people call as a nurse, I say, we all need to pretend like we have it. If we pretend like we have it and wear the mask and the person next to you wears the mask, that gives us the protection. You know, it's, it's, you know, I know that some people take that as a political thing, but that is, that is what the people, I trust the people I work with and I trust the people at those entities that we mentioned earlier. And that's what they've said is gonna give us the best protection. Another thing is people get frustrated of why do things change? Well, as we collect data and we learn about this very new thing, then recommendations change. And that is why one time you might hear this. And then as time goes by and people continue to learn and data is collected, that recommendation can change. So people get on trust, or they don't trust the data because they think, well, you said this before. Well, we learn. And when we learn, we make changes.
Yeah, that's what science does.
So I guess moving it forward, I don't know if there's a general consensus amongst the council, do masks work? I mean, I, in my experience, you know, I wear the mask when I'm out in the pub, in public. And I guess to kind of the Simon's point early on, in no way, shape or form, if a mask mandate was proposed here, I don't see anybody wanting to require people to wear a mask from the moment they step outside of their door until they come home at the end of night. I think at least from what I've seen in other cities, it's largely if you can't social distance or if you go into a public space or a public, or if you go into a business where the public is. This are the only requirements that I've seen. Now, maybe there's other ones out there, but.
And I've also seen in some areas, if you're in a public area and you are, it's like a park and you're exercising, you're doing things that involve exertion, then a mask isn't required. So there, there are definitely some nuances. And I think it kind of serves some people's purposes to say, well, the, the mask mandates that are coming out, just say you have to wear it all the time, or you have to wear it when you leave your house. Well, there's, there's a whole lot of nuance in there that they're not taking into account because it doesn't really serve the narrative. So, and it's hard to argue against that when people are kind of sitting there thinking what they think a mask requirement means, or any kind of hygienic requirements out of this. Okay, I got you. You're showing you muted, Simon. So go ahead and chime in. There's no need to have me calling. Okay.
Says the host muted me.
Oh.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah, sure can.
Okay, for some reason, I was trying to hit unmute and it said the host has muted me.
All right, that might be a me problem. So let me try to, just, I'm gonna stop. Go ahead.
I was, uh, no, oh, um, so it seems that obviously this is a multifaceted issue. There's the, the freedom aspect, there's the the do masks work aspect, there's, there's all sorts of aspects, but a big aspect for us locally seems to be local business owners. And I think that's something that we have to talk about. There are a lot of local business owners that are opposed to, to this. They feel like it will push customers away. So and I can understand that sentiment. So if, if we move ahead with something like this, is there a way that we can mitigate and take the pressure off the local businesses and aim this at the citizens, you know? I don't want the local businesses to have to feel the pressure of enforcement or have to feel like it's pushed down on them or anything like that. And this is something I've been thinking about a ton, trust me, like way too much probably because I've just been going back and forth and back and forth and what's right and what's wrong and what's political. And ultimately, my thought is this, I don't want to put any undue pressure on businesses. I, if, as a local government, if, do masks work? I don't know. I, I believe based off of the CDC and what I know and as a person wearing masks, I do believe they work. But here's what it boils down to for me. If we can possibly find a way together to make, to save a life, then is it worth it? Well, if it was my brother or my mom, then yes, it is worth it. So and that's, some people might think that it's extreme, but we actually have the power to possibly save someone's life. But at the same time, I don't want to just push something through and make everybody mad. I want to make sure that we look at things, uh, things if we're going to have a consensus on this dates for how long the mandate or the resolution or something would would be in effect till we could have to vote on it every month or every, even every meeting, something, you know, like that, so that people don't say, oh, it's here forever. Looking at taking pressure off businesses and, and, and things like that. So I think that's something that we need to talk about if we're gonna look at a mask resolution, because I just don't like the word mandate anymore for some reason. How are we gonna address those things?
I agree. You know, that's what, this is where I was the, the other night is I've been struggling to try and find a way to help our Main Street businesses. And what can we do as a council? What can we, you know, what things can we do to help them? And I think it's probably gonna be beneficial to come up with a couple of goals or outs, you know, to your point. Don't do any harm to businesses, you know, but we gotta put that in context too, because our businesses are operating in at 50% capacity at this point. And I think one of the goals of a mask mandate would be to get our businesses back to full operation. Along with looking up at you and I, trying to keep our students here in Cedar Falls and making sure they don't have to shut down operations or whatever, or however that works. And I think outlining some of those things is probably gonna be beneficial because, I mean, the depending on what you believe, you know, the sooner we get a good handle on this, the sooner we get back to some type of a normal. And how long are our businesses gonna be operating at 50%? Well, as long as those numbers stay up there, that's where they're gonna be at. So I think ultimately, the goal of any, the goal is gonna be to get back to some type of a normal. And how do we address that? Or can we address that at the local level? Because we're not getting much for guidance from the state. We're not getting much guidance from anywhere above that. So although I do thought, I thought I heard the White House sent something to Iowa that we should issue a mask mandate here a couple of days ago, interestingly enough.
They did.
But ultimately, it's how do we get back to some type of a normal where our businesses can operate at 100%?
That's true.
There are other aspects too of this for psychology of getting residents comfortable, especially the ones that, that are very fearful of COVID-19. How do we get them to a point where they're comfortable with going back out in public? And it might not, you know, looking at a mask requirement or whatever. Other things too are, that I think council needs to be thinking about is how do we promote people to come downtown? Like, what, what can we do ordinance wise? Or is, I know that we're looking internally, trying to get either changes or relaxations of the cafe rules for downtown to, so that people can spread out and they can be out and about without really putting themselves in their view at risk. So there's a lot of that that has to be addressed. I was just out, you know, certainly have the comments on for College Hill for the weekend, but I was on campus Friday just working on my old haunt at Rod Library on my laptop. And things were very distanced out. Students were wearing masks, the librarians were in masks. And it was a very safe, comfortable environment. And I felt no concerns at all. At Book Bistro where I was at, they were squirting down the tables and they even had little signs on the tables that said dirty and clean. So I went to a table that said clean after I left. Within two minutes, one of the student workers had come over and sprayed the, or I switched it to dirty. They came over and cleaned it up, put it back to clean. So there are things like that that might not involve government reach to make those changes or to force things on residents, but that still can have very positive impacts. And it might just need to mean that the businesses need that inspiration or those ideas. And, and I think that's a component that we could really be focusing on right now to, you know, as Kelly mentioned, education. Part of that education is what techniques and tools could businesses be using in our public areas in order to have a safer environment that does necessarily involve a mandate potentially or requirement.
To that point, and I hope we get there later. I think we're jumping around quite a bit here, but.
That's a work session.
I had talked with Community Main Street last week, and it sounds like there's been several conversations over the summer regarding is there a way that we can, you know, just a thought, close down Main Street, allow business, then restaurants to move out into the street so they can get their six foot distance? Make people feel more comfortable. I was in Galena a couple of months ago and they were, they had already done that. And it was an outstanding experience. I believe to Ron or somebody else on staff, there's a dram shop thing that we would have, that the council would have to, an ordinance that would have to be changed to allow that. Which at some point, if we can have that conversation, I think it's warranted. Because and we're heading into fall here now. So there's only so much this year, but are we looking at this in the spring? And let's be prepared moving into next year for certain, for business owners downtown, if that's what they're looking for. Let's have a conversation about it. I think there's a huge expense to the businesses down there for additional tables and maybe the city can help with that or maybe not. But I think we gotta do what we can to help businesses. So.
And that, that could, Mark, could be a really important agreement or consensus that we have, is that we should be focusing activities that don't just deal with the next couple of weeks or months. But to say, hey, if we need to change ordinances because we can anticipate spring issues still next year. I would love to have council agree to that. So staff knows what, like, maybe there's some longer term things within our ordinances that could be changed in order to help us even in the spring. So thanks. That's a great point.
So I noticed, I think somebody sent me an email or it was a comment about a, a county in Canada. And somebody made a comment, like, I can't believe you guys are having this discussion because in March, our sheriff issued a mandate for our county. And, you know, we, we just did it. And they did make the comment because people are often worried about having confrontation, that the hopes is education and that no one is expected to go and put themselves in an uncomfortable position with harassing. Or I think there was a question of last time, are we gonna arrest people? That's not gonna happen. I wouldn't support that. There's been questions about, are we gonna force children, like forcefully put masks on children? I don't see us doing that. People voice concerns about not being able to breathe. And I believe that was in the mandate that was proposed, that if you were having trouble breathing, you could take your mask off. I mean, the goal of this is first of all, I feel like, okay, we support our business. I mean, we, we are, we want to support our business as much as we can. I agree with everything that Councilman Miller just said. But we also need to make sure that our citizens feel like they're being supported as well. Because I think most of us have seen those emails where people that aren't happy with the decision last time have said they want to make sure their safety and health is supported. So we need to make sure we're having that in the conversation. But the goal should be education and also just looking out for the general health of our citizens. I just think we need to have a stance and, and we need to have, hopefully, when we leave here today, we Uh, hopefully when we leave here today, we can decide where we go next and I I don't, you know, think. I appreciate the conversation. I I just, I just wanted to put that out there as well. I don't think we need to be forcefully putting masks on anybody. We just hope that they listen and hopefully take that, uh, information into account when they make that decision.
Dave, you've been pretty quiet. You have thoughts that are jumping out at you right now?
Okay, can you hear me? I'm just so against making laws against people's freedoms. Um, it's the freedom of the business owner to say how he wants to run his place inside. Um, when somebody's fear impinges on somebody else's freedom, I have a problem with that. There's a whole bunch of things I was starting to think about. One thing, if we wanna get back to normalcy. And I do wanna congratulate Craig Birdy on his promotion today. I was there and also forty years with Boswick, which is. That's a long time, man, forty years. So anyway, those guys, I was impressed with with both of them today. But the nice thing about being out there at the PSO station and Jeff Olson, I might say he looked good out there too as well, since he's here and. And, uh, but anyway, my point is, we need to get back to normalcy. We need to have these council meetings again. And since we had the one out there at the PSO building. Um, and you signed in, they took your temperature. We had our masks on until we were six feet away. I think we could start to have our council meetings again. I think that would. Make people feel a little more relaxed. When we hide as council people. I think that shows that there's some severity out there that I actually don't believe it's as severe as all that. And the way it was orchestrated today out at the PSO building, I think the council could follow along with that. We could start to have our council meetings. We could have discussions, we could all be together, and I don't think that there would be any risk. So I've been thinking about a lot of things that were being said. I I'm not sleepy by any means, so I I paid attention to everything that was said and probably could repeat quite a lot of it. Uh, I'm always very concerned about businesses and they've invested a tremendous amount of money and they're a big stakeholder. And when you start to mandate against them, I have a problem with that. So I don't know, I'm just kind of on a different side. Uh, I'm more for freedoms and, uh, that's why I'll always kind of vote. That's all, I probably said too much, but it is recorded, so you guys could play it back if you need to.
We don't have to mandate, I mean, we don't have to tell a business owner that they have to require masks in their business though. If we make a resolution that is aimed at the citizens and not at the businesses, put it on the citizens, you know. On, uh, as their responsibility. Uh, there's lots of.
By business type last week, restaurants and bars are managed by the state at this point. They're, they're all the alcohol and Firehounds Bureau, I believe, is doing their inspections. The governor has decided what level they can operate at and I would think if anything does come forward. That is already, I mean, that should certainly be included. So. I I, to my, to me anyway, the restaurants and bar side of it. Is is already being managed. So then you're into, you know, when you're looking at retail, how do you do that or do you do anything there? What is it? How does it look for, uh? Say a business that gets some walk-in customers out in the industrial park, are they having, are they required to wear masks? How does that work? So I. Just trying to break it down by different business entities, I guess. Cause I I don't wanna put any other mandates out there myself or that could potentially hurt businesses. But at the same time, you all have been getting the same emails I'm getting from the number of people that aren't going out. They aren't doing anything. They aren't spending money at businesses because they don't feel comfortable. So there's a whole, you know, and it 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 ends up boiling down to what. How many, how many people are there, you know, because it seems pretty, pretty cut and dry. You either believe in it or you don't. And we're getting emails and messages from both of them, so.
Yep, yep, I'm getting emails from both and, uh, the other side of the coin of what we talk about is, you know. With a mandate, it's, it's, uh, not enforceable as far as a law, like an ordinance would be. So then we wouldn't, you know, I think sometimes people get scared of the word mandate. Maybe, um, you know, we try to find a, a resolution on how we stand on masks. I don't know what the right answer is either, but I don't know that, uh. If we make a resolution or a mandate, are, are we gonna have more people wearing masks? You know, that's a question I ask as well. Is it gonna? Gonna help out? What what's the, you know, are we just making a stance to make a stance? Kind of playing devil's advocate at this point, but you see what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. And I was checking out Dubuque's, Dubuque just put their ordinance in place. So to Kevin or Ron. This was proposed the other night as a resolution. What, I don't know if you have the information, but if it was to go as an ordinance as Dubuque did. It is enforceable. I think there was a ten dollar fine if you weren't wearing your mask. Their whole point was education as well, but. Can this be put in place as an ordinance with the current dispute from the state? Ron or Kevin?
Oh, let me see it for Kevin.
He's muted.
Yep, so Kevin, here you are, sir.
I'm unmuted now. So as I stated before, um, there are differences of opinions about whether or not. Localities are able to institute an ordinance that would make mask wearing mandatory. Uh, to my knowledge, there's been no court cases that have challenged that. Because I don't think there actually been any citations issued in any of the cities where there's been a mask requirement. Um, I don't know that for sure, but that's my, my understanding. And so. I'll say this, I I agree with the statement that a resolution would not be enforceable in terms of any penalty for violation of it. But an ordinance would be as a municipal infraction. Now, whether that survives challenge in court based upon home rule. I don't think anybody can say for sure right now.
Kevin. What's the liability on the city with, uh, even, uh, if we decided to possibly pursue a resolution or a mandate? What's the liability on the city and the taxpayers i- if if there was a class action suit or? Um, or or any kind of, uh, suit, what what are we looking at there? What's our liability?
For failure to act, you mean?
Well, for for any, anything that came up, well, if we, uh, I don't know what someone would sue for or what would be possible. But I just mean, if we don't do anything, are we liable for anything? If we do make a resolution, are we liable? Could they sue? Could, could any of this come harm the taxpayers? You know what I mean?
Sure, um, I don't think a cause of action would lie for like a general duty. For instance, to impose a mask requirement. Um, I don't think liability would lie there. Um, and any challenges to a mask mandate would be an individual challenge to fight municipal infraction, for instance. And then if it, if it isn't upheld by the court, that charge wouldn't stand. But I don't see a mass class action, uh, cause of action here either way.
It's worth, there's a, there's a concern I've heard, um. That if if the city were to do a requirement or something that that went against what the governor's, uh, said, the city's authorities were. That there could be a, a risk that if there are state funds that come out for financial damages. Or, uh, s- some sort of support to the cities, that the ones that didn't follow. Uh, the governor's guidance that went against her guidance would not be eligible or they'd be prohibited from receiving those kinds of funds. Uh, it seems like a valid concern. I don't know if politically that would. Des Moines would be willing to do that. Ron, are you able to, have you heard anything about that or any?
I have not. I I think, uh, Kevin kind of covered what we know that's out there right now. With regard to resolutions, uh, versus ordinance and the enforceability.
Either in theory or an option at this point, resolution or ordinance?
Yes.
But ordinance would. Ordinance would be a big step, um, but it would also require three, uh, public hearing and three readings unless you suspend the rules. And so that would mean a two month period of, of waiting. Or suspending the rules to to do it in one meeting. So that brings up a whole nother can of worms there.
Now, there's something I'd, I'd like to have council consider for, um, staff action, because there's gonna be, there'd be some research required. But there are, what, seven or eight, maybe cities in Iowa that now have a mask mandate at various levels. Uh, whether it's a requirement, uh, and and they're actually enforcing it. Or, um, there's, i- it's kind of more like a guideline, even they're calling the mandate. Would council be willing to have staff look in to see what the numbers have, how those have changed? Any, any impact that those have had, uh, a positive or or negative on, uh, the COVID counts there? Is that worth discussing or finding out?
Mayor, we we've actually already done some of that. Kevin, uh, went over a little bit and I think, uh. Uh, Chief Birdy has, has done some as well, so if you. Unmute him, he may be able to.
Well, okay, Chief Birdy, go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Perfect.
I I can just tell you about a few that I checked in today and I was, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I just checked with a few today, just talking with other police chiefs out there and, uh, you know, I'll just tell you some of the things I wrote down. Ames is in the process of drafting an ordinance. Uh, they have no penalty is gonna be part of their ordinance. So they're gonna make an ordinance, but not have a fine to it. Uh, Dubuque did an ordinance about three weeks ago, uh, just like Mark had said, they have a ten dollar fine on a municipal infraction. They have not issued any of those citations. And, uh, they had some mask protests after they did it, but they really said they didn't have any problems. And one thing I should back up and add is that everybody did say their goal is education and getting people to wear masks. So every, every one of these police chiefs I talked to said that. Uh, I talked to Doug Shannon down in Mount Vernon. They passed a resolution, it's unenforceable. And, uh, it was just real clear with them that they wanted to encourage people to wear masks, but that they were gonna do it as a resolution. They didn't want to issue any citations or anything. Um, and then Iowa City, I think we've all seen on the news, they have an ordinance that has a four hundred and fifty dollar fine. They have not issued any citations and their goals are education and encouraging people to wear masks. Um, of these four chiefs I talked to too, they all brought up the obvious concerns about enforcement too. So that was just, uh, four departments that I talked to today or four cities that we thought had some kind of map, uh, ordinance or, uh, resolution.
So what's your take? Do you have any opinions one way or the other, as far as enforcement would go or? Did you hear anything specific about disputes between business owners and customers or anything along those lines? I mean, do you see anything, any issues there? Should, uh, should something be put in place? Or do you have any concerns?
Well, Director and Olson, I spent, you know, quite a bit of time talking about that and and I think, I definitely don't have an opinion on what happens. Um, but I would say, you know, enforcement is definitely problematic. You know, just if if you're, you know, whether it's in a bar or a restaurant or a group at a park or a group in a front yard. You know, enforcement would definitely be challenging and I think it would, we would really want to go into it if, if, uh, you know, if the council decided to set a fine with an ordinance. You know, I think you gotta be real clear that do you want people getting fines, you know? Um, I think everybody's goal, though, just from hearing this group is of course, you know, education and encourage people to wear masks, so. Um, all the chiefs did point out, you know, complications with enforcement. Uh, most of them said really their cities just wanted to get the education out there, so. And, you know, some of these have been around for a few weeks, so it's probably pretty clear that, uh, you know, if they've issued, I didn't hear of anybody who's issued any citations either. Not even a ten dollar ticket in Dubuque, so that probably tells you a little bit about their, uh, you know, what they're thinking on enforcement.
So if with Ames, they have an ordinance without a fine, does that just mean that, like, the punishment, so to speak, is education? Like, that's the only outcome?
Well, that's what Chief Huff, um, that's what he told me, that they're drafting the ordinance right now, it's not in place yet and that they're just doing it with no penalty. Um, and I think, uh. Yeah, he just said they're drafting the ordinance, but there wasn't gonna be a fine with it. So I think they're trying to contrast some of the large fines that maybe Iowa City and other communities have done.
So, so that's the first part of it, knowing what they're doing. Uh, the second part is what impact that's having. And so that's what I'd like to get council consensus on is have, if we can have staff. It might, the the more time that we have, uh, of them looking at it, the the more reliable the data is. But if we can, if we could at least see that, yes, having a mass mandate drops COVID count numbers. Or no, having a mass num- uh, mandate doesn't do anything. To me, that'd be really helpful to know.
How about if we turn out a promotional video that would educate people and. And run that on channel fifteen and and get with Cedar Falls Utilities and get it on there and educate people that way. Instead of having an ordinance and cut out freedoms, why don't we just look at some sort of an educational device like that? Um, that way you could put it on and educate people, since that's what you're all kind of talking about and that'd be an easy way.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with that, channel fifteen, uh, putting together, uh, additional materials.
So I think to the doctor's point the other night, though, it doesn't, does it get compliance or does it go far enough? And I guess we gotta decide what, if anything. I mean, if the goal is to get as many people as possible to to follow suit here, then. Does that do it or do we need to take a step farther?
So, um, I feel like we're all on the same page as far as education. I don't think we need to focus on, I think, we don't need to punish people. To me, even if you just get, uh, we want everybody to feel safe. We don't want businesses to feel like they are being forced into something. Uh, in the end, it's really the person or the business is gonna have to live with the consequences of their decision. So to me, between the education and us taking a stand as a council. Uh, and saying what, you know, the majority of us, majority of, the majority of us feel is right. People are gonna decide what they're gonna do, you know, if, even if just. Even if that just makes a few people, um, know the importance. Or if they feel like, nope, I'm still not gonna wear it, that's their decision. But I feel like we as a council need to make a decision and we need to make our stance. As to how we feel for our citizens. Um, if it, I think we've all agreed, like, we're not gonna arrest people or. Even if there was a fine, it doesn't sound like anybody's issuing fines. We just wanna know we're doing the best for the people in our city. And if they choose like, nope, I'm not gonna wear it, or the business chooses, nope, I'm not gonna do it, then that's their decision. But at least then we as a council have made a decision.
Right, go ahead.
Thanks, I noticed you unmuted me and unmuted me again. Is there sending me a message?
Yes.
Thank you. I haven't had much to say, uh, simply because I've really enjoyed the conversation. What I, what I hope from this conversation is, at this point at least, exactly what I wanted. And that is a recognition that all of us, whether we believe in the COVID pandemic or not. Recognize we have a responsibility to all of our residents, our people who are concerned about COVID and our business people. We take all of this seriously. We're looking for the solution that's gonna be the least intrusive and most effective. And talking about education, I I like the idea of, uh, I think Kelly maybe suggested that. She'd been somewhere and, or it was you mayor, uh, and they, a restaurant had a certain protocol that they used. Can we come up also with some kind of shared, uh, database or whatever for our businesses? Best practices in COVID interventions or whatever. And I think sometimes, uh, when the business hears mandate, they just think that Big Brother is gonna come in and tell them to do something. Whereas other people look at it as an opportunity to find an intervention that works for them. I I want to say to businesses that. If if we make, I I'm not about a mandate either, I think a statement or so, just some position that we take. But the last thing we wanna do is hurt their business. To me, intervening now is gonna help them keep their businesses open. As opposed to letting things get out of hand and in two months, God, we gotta close everything down again. Let's, uh, be a little bit more proactive about it and not heavy handed and everything I've heard tonight is. We don't wanna be heavy handed. We don't wanna find people. We don't wanna find people, we want to encourage them to be safe. I I wanna, I wanna send a message to the people who are concerned. We share your concern and we wanna help protect you. And I want businesses to know that we wanna find every way we can have, we can to keep them open. And I think a a combination of everything we've talked about tonight, putting putting a statement together, putting some best practices together. Uh, looking at, can we allow uh Main Street to close down and open up? Uh, I think Delaney is not the only place that does that kind of thing. And that's right up Cedar Falls Alley, you know, I mean, getting creative about those things. Uh, it's time to work together and not uh continue to just trust each other. And I think this kind of soft approach to it that we're talking about tonight would be the best way to do it.
And great, so Daryl, I asked to see your your hands up there. Um, I've got you unmuted on my end, uh, but I think that your device is still muted. And that's the honestly toughest thing about Zoom is dealing with the mutes because it's not intentional, just the system throws us into that. So Daryl, uh, let me hit unmute again. So you should be frame clear to talk, Daryl, on your end, I just, it still shows mute. Darn you zone. Okay, maybe we'll get Daryl soon. All right, so other thoughts, we, note two, I didn't mention at the start, we've got until um 5:15 on this. Because planning and zoning will need to jump into your chairs right after this, your virtual chair.
While Daryl unmutes, Daryl, if you unmute, just say yes and you can interrupt me. Um, what, I mean, what's the consensus here? I mean, are we trying to you know, reword a resolution that make, that says that we, you know, citizens wear masks? Are we trying to, you know, I I don't personally, I I think that the mandate the other night, uh, I'd I'd like to see it reworded and there were some things, so I don't know what we're getting at, I guess, is what I'm saying. What what are we trying to go for?
I I agree, I don't necessarily want that lengthy of a mandate. I just think a statement about uh where we live in a community and part of being in a community is taking care of each other. And here are a few things that the city would really like you to take seriously. Uh, so it's not a requirement, but you might get a little peer pressure if you're not working or whatever. But um, I just think it's, it's not becoming of us as a council to just sit back and not uh recognize the concerns that people have on both sides of the issue and that we're thinking about it. You know, maybe we have a mandate in place that if uh the bottom falls out and there's another crisis, then we could have something to put in place. But until then, I just think, you know, we're we're a community that's in this together, let's provide them with some guidance as to how to do it.
So are you saying Frank, you wanna have um something in place for now? And then maybe like a DEFCON one level response, ready to go if we get to that point?
Yeah, yeah, we reach a certain point, then we have to be a little more heavy handed about it. But right now, all I hear us saying is we wanna educate people, make them sensitive to each other's position on things and respect, respect each other and now wear a mask or.
You know, and if if uh then, like, since we're talking about COVID mitigation strategies, uh, if we could take like just three minutes or so, this, this is the one real chance I've got to ask you guys about this. The the chart that I put together, the uh operation, city operational response guide with with staff. I built that with with staff so that we would have something internally in our buildings. And with that chart that I showed earlier, we have something to say, okay, once we're at this point, we're gonna jump up. If we're below this, we'll go down. And it's meant, you know, just to provide some some clarity and and some expectations. Um, if we're talking about wanting to provide guidance or in best practices for cities too, uh, is, would we want to have something like that available for them? Like a template they could use to say for your own businesses, if we're at this, we strongly recommend that you take these steps. But we're not gonna require it. Specific guidance for them to to run off of if they choose to?
We need to remember too that this is for prevention. So even though we might not need to see the numbers today, uh, we did just get back to school. I mean, I I go up to the hill frequently. I think they all got back into town about seven to uh nine-ish days ago. The other thing is to remember is we're not testing asymptomatic people. So um, it just, my goal is we do something. And uh, I also want businesses to realize uh that there are people, I think they fear that they're gonna lose business. Um, maybe that might be the case for some people, but there are gonna be people that come back to your business. Um, my anniversary was on a Tuesday like a month ago. And I, uh, like I said, had not been out and I called to make a reservation and I um, you know, I I just wanna feel comfortable if I'm gonna go spend money. Um, and I asked to be seated outdoors, which I understand is prime real estate probably in this day and age. But it was a Tuesday, just kind of the response from the person who answered, um, which I know was the owner. Um, I feel like it was a politically thi- political thing as soon as I asked. And so in the end, I ended up canceling my reservation, nothing against the business. But I, as a human and a customer, didn't feel like it was gonna be worth the time and money I wanted to invest. So I feel like some folks don't hear people to feel that way. And so you you might see an increase in some of your business i- is what I hope we can also educate our business owners on.
Well, and that's something that uh, I don't know if we can include that in a in a education or the materials, but just basic empathy for the other side, regardless of what side you're on. That's a uh aspect that's really missing right now in the city and nationwide. To that the people who disagree with you are obviously wrong and they they don't have their facts straight. And and you basically cut off their their, your dialogue with them. And you stick to your own side and listen to your own side. And that's, that's occurring on both sides of the spectrum here. So I would, I would encourage that and that's something I can certainly uh promote and and engage with even right away to to try to help the city and and we need councils help too to bridge some of these divides and get people talking to each other again. It's a, it's a Mr. Rogers kind of problem, but it's one that we desperately need to to resolve as part of this public health crisis.
You got that, Kevin? It was a different Mr. Rogers, I'm sorry.
Have the cardigan.
Another, another question we have to ask is, you know, um, you know, if we just put out a recommendation or we do this, then essentially we're riding the line, you know, the middle. And is it, I mean, is that okay? Well, maybe, maybe not. It's riding the line is the same thing as taking the no stance. Which if that's the route council wants to go, then that's okay. But you know, we can't think like, oh, we're right in the middle line and we're recommending this and we're recommending this. Well, we're still saying no then, which again is okay. Uh, but if we're gonna make a stance and make a resolution, then and that's what we wanna do to say we wanna protect our people, then I would say if there's consensus for that, then we should work on rewriting something that takes pressure off businesses and puts a date on it and is a resolution aimed at compliance for citizens to wear masks in Cedar Falls. You know, so, so we're actually taking a stance. I don't know, I don't, I don't wanna ride the line where it's like, oh, we wanna all, you know, we want both sides to be happy. We already know from the emails that doesn't matter what we do today, we're gonna wake up with angry emails tomorrow. It doesn't matter if we pass it, if we don't pass it, people are not gonna be happy. So I think we either have to say no or yes, personally, I don't really wanna ride the line on it.
Well, if you're gonna go to, go ahead, Frank.
To no, no or yes to a mandate, is that what you're saying?
Well, no or yes to whether we're gonna pursue a resolution or mandate, yeah.
Well, I think you're, if you go the resolution route, you're essentially that it's gonna be viewed like we're not saying no because it's unenforceable. And much like we're hearing from people, you should put this in place. So I think if you, if you want to be as effective as possible, you have to put an ordinance in place. And whether you issue fines or not, there's gotta be some type of repercussion to get the seriousness across. Otherwise, in that resolution to our, you know, discussion the other night, it's unenforceable and people are gonna do what they does it will.
Well, if you talk about enforceability for for Chief Birdie, things that we can enforce already, like it within uh the, say, the bars or or places where people are congregating outside especially, aren't there enforcement mechanisms to address that? Or is that, I I don't remember the the proclamation up or up here for the governor, but is that something that that you can take action on to disperse people?
Well, there are, there are things that we could do inside the establishments, but really through the governor's proclamation, alcoholic beverages uh division and the uh their liquor license are handling inside the bars and restaurants.
Okay, so how about outside, if like people are congregating to get in and they're all squished together? Is that something that as a city we can still already take action on without anything new?
We do have our loitering ordinance and and you could use it in those cases. But uh, really the goal would be to get them to disperse and and, you know, be safe and spread out and and that may not solve it either because you just may move them off the public sidewalk and they go to a a private place that you can affect. So, but we do have some tools to help move people along.
Did you and I just come out with something today about uh potential suspensions for house parties and those type of things? I thought I read in the paper.
Yeah, I I got that uh email from from President Nuck and it does, I can forward that to council. Um, it talks about um the fact of disappointment in what happened last weekend and saying that the goal, since the students have signed a statement of um uh to protect each other, uh, they're supposed to. Um, if they don't, then they they potentially are or probably are a violation of student uh conduct standards regarding public health and welfare. And that there is a uh the option, the possibility of of student conduct. Um, I forget the term, but 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 being put under student conduct and that could fall all the way up to suspension. I I possibly fines, things like that. So there are measures being that are available to the university that we don't currently have at the city level.
I don't know if staff wants some direction out of this, but I'm, I I feel like we gotta at least establish some goals here.
Yep.
Wrote a couple of them down, we talked about it a little bit and I you know, get businesses back to 100% capacity, keep U and I open, keep our elementary, junior high schools open. Uh, help our residents all feel safe, no matter what their beliefs are, their race or gender. And above all else, is not overload our hospital network, which I think is, was the overlying goal when all of this started. So I mean, can we agree on those things as something that we want? That we value in this?
I think those are good, good goals. I do, when Simon says we need to take a stance, I think we need to take a stance. And by taking a stance, like I said, I don't mean, I feel like, okay, when I was in college and I I'm a, I'm a wuss. So if I was congregating and a police officer or someone in authority walked up to me and reminded me uh that maybe I wasn't making the best decision, that would make an impact on a person like me. And I don't think I'm that unique. Um, we're not trying to hurt people, we're trying to keep our city healthy and operational. I mean, I can't imagine if you at, you and I shuts down. I mean, it's already a huge economic impact of, you know, not having football games and not having all the things that usually gone at you and I, or all the things that go on in our city. I feel like we need to look at the bigger picture. So I I think Councilman Miller's um goal or what he just said is great. I think we need to take a stance, knowing that the goal is education. I don't think we need to overload our police officers uh in public safety to go look for problems. But if they see it or, you know, I feel like there's an opportunity for education, just like there's an opportunity for education in a lot of different, different situations. In the end, people are gonna make their own decision, but I feel like the majority, we need to decide how the majority of the council feels. And I don't think not taking a stance either way says anything. We need to make a decision, maybe it against or for. And we don't need to put, I don't care how you word it, but I want it to encourage people. Uh, in my hopes is to mask up. Um, I, you know, I, but with the understanding of education and and people not feeling like if you can't breathe, that we're not gonna allow you to take your mask off, things like that, like we're all in this together. We don't wanna hurt you, we just want us all to be safe.
And I I've got one question maybe for clarity uh from the enforcement end. Uh, looking at the governor's proclamations, where it talks about social distancing for bars and restaurants. It says that bars and restaurants were required to provide um or or limit patrons from congregating closer together than six feet. If people are outside of the bar going, like seeking to go in, would they be legally be considered patrons? Or at that point, is it just a mass gathering? Is that clear? That's a Kevin question.
Mayor, probably uh depends upon what side of that you're on. If I were, somebody tried to enforce that with me, I'd say, well, I just stopped for a minute, I'm I'm moving on here. So you're back to real difficulties with enforcement.
Okay, so that's the bar end. Um, there's the other part of like a mass gathering where it's, it's does the gathering organizer must ensure at least six feet of physical distance between each group or individual attending alone. So people outside of a bar, is that a mass gathering? Or is that just a random group of people who happen to be co-located and we, there's no enforcement possible for them?
End up in court with that one, don't you?
Yeah, the cricket.
And I don't know who's, uh, if anyone anywhere in the state's attempting to enforce those in the scenario you described. I I don't know.
So then that probably would fall back into the university, they have their guidance to say, don't do that. And they've even put that restriction on campus and off for their students. So it's that ball really in their court at this point. Oh, okay, thanks for the clarification on that. Uh, I'm good, Mark?
We got five minutes left.
Yeah.
What do we wanna get out of this?
Well, I think we have to decide if we want staff to move forward with writing some sort of resolution, mask resolution or mask mandate that's aimed at compliance and education and takes and makes sure that it uh, you know, doesn't single out business owners or whether we want to not do that and just talk about it again next meeting. So.
Let's decide if we can do that, if we can, because time is of the essence, so I feel like.
I would support the immediate writing of some sort of resolution, but still perhaps get that settled. And this is, this is where we stand. But this is an ongoing, ever-changing kind of thing. And if if we could have some sort of advisory group or, you know, get get some business owners and other people on that committee that we can continue to have a discussion about what what are the impacts? Are there other other kinds of interventions? Once again, I think some restaurant owners are really in, you know, doing some creative things. And if they share those ideas with others, I just don't wanna just say, here's the resolution, uh, we're done with it. I mean, seems to me there's some ongoing dialogue that maybe could be had uh to make it more tolerable for people, but that's just me.
Do we, do we look for another work session? I mean, this was great conversation. Do we schedule another work session relatively soon, maybe before the next council meeting? To try and, and we take away what we take away from this and.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with with Mark, I mean, yeah, and and with Kelly, in a lot of instances, we have to, we we have to, I think, decide what we're gonna do. And if it takes another work session to say like, here, we want a resolution that reads this and that does this, then that's what it takes. I think with three minutes left, we probably should just agree to to have another one uh as soon as possible and then have a final outcome of what's possible.
Okay, how about uh next Wednesday at uh, we could do later in the day since there's no P and Z. So what about 5:30 on Wednesday? Kind of shoot for that.
Uh, what is that?
That's the second.
Second? Yeah.
What is, uh, let's see, sorry, let me pull up my calendar.
Notionally, it'll, it'll be about that time, we, we can work out the details on it. But it sounds like we're not at a point really we can, we can put together uh, a cohesive plan yet. But there are some, some takeaways for staff uh, that we can talk about, like getting some additional information. I, I would love to see what's happening in the other cities that are doing the mandate. Is it having the impact that they're looking for or numbers down? So we can present that to you. And we'll also have another um, week's worth of figures for you for what uh, is happening in our community and elsewhere after school has started. If, if something happens before then, if we see different numbers or a greatly different trend in the wrong direction, then I, I would be uh, totally amenable to, to a meeting before that and let you know that.
What about, is it possible to shift it to uh, Tuesday or Thursday? I know Thursday's bad for the agenda, the only reason I ask is I'm going to be traveling from uh, for work that day. And then I have to teach at the college that night and I'm just nervous, I won't, I'm not sure what time I'm going to get back.
We can, we can work that out, maybe even Monday too.
Monday, Monday works great with me, Tuesday works great with me.
Okay, well, we'll sort that out. Well, thanks everybody, this is the uh, second of lots of discussions on this sort of thing. Dealing with uh, trying to parse through information and then figure out what uh, consensus we can reach. So anything else for the good of the order for today?
For a good discussion, you guys.
Yeah, it's important. All right, well, I will talk to you guys soon.
All right, thanks.
Bye bye.
Have a good afternoon, everybody.
Yep.
Bye bye.